Video conference. We have two items on our regular agenda this morning, followed by a need for an executive session. There are no, item one tonight is citizen comments or this morning or citizen comments. We've had no citizens sign up to speak today. So we will move to our regular agenda. Items two, one and two, one, one are related. And before we begin consideration of those, I'd like to ask city manager Jared Atkinson to tee this up. And I think we'll hear from the facilities committee, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good morning. Appreciate everybody getting together for us last working week of the year. Item today is a project that your facilities committee has worked on for quite some time. So with that, I would like to push it over to the chair of your facilities committee, Mayor Pro Tim Massengale, for himself and the other members to have an opportunity to speak, Mayor. Then we'll come back for your presentation.
Sounds good. Mr. Massengale.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make some brief comments. What we're going to consider today is the possibility of a new home for public health. I, I think back to 2016 when I came on the job and reviewed many different city facilities and none stuck in my mind as much as public health when I walked through and saw the, how cramped they were and, and how efficiently they used the space that was available to them. There was no doubt that in 2016, there was a need, there was just not a, a plan for to get them a new facility. They've, I think you'll hear some of this in Mr. Atkinson's presentation. They've been in a leased facility since 2012. You know, public health falls underneath a lot of people's radar until this year. And obviously they've taken the lead on helping us work through the pandemic, but they do so much more and they also serve so much more than just Lubbock citizens. Public health has grown over the past year. This time last year, they had seven, 27 full-time employees tonight. Today they have 39. I believe we've added a number of programs. The location that the facilities committee is proposing is really a good location to serve the constituency of public health. It's a building that's easily renovated and it just provides for so many more opportunities for public health as they, as they continue to serve our community. So I don't want to take away anyone else's thunder. I want to hand it over to, or see if my committee has any comments to make. I see Mr. Griffith on video. Mr. Griffith, do you have any comments before we kick it to Mr. Atkinson's presentation?
I do not. Pro Tim.
Ms. Joy?
Nothing further. We just needed.
Got it. All right, Mr. Atkinson, it's all yours.
Thank you, sir. If you'll bear with me just a moment, we're going to switch over to the presentation. If I could ask somebody to verify that the presentation's up for us.
You're on. You're on. We can see it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll jump right in. Mayor Pro Tim noted your City of Lubbock Public Health Department moved into leased space in 2012. We were in the Lubbock Housing Authority Office Facility here in downtown Lubbock. LHA has been a very good and very accommodating landlord. And certainly in this year, as we have certainly grown to take over every hallway corridor closet and anything else we can find, it just worked with us very well. But the facility itself is very constrained, very limited as to what we can do in there. Earlier this year, as the pandemic ramped up, we did move community development over there, really to help coordinate service and to assist with the pandemic needs. And you'll hear some more about that a little later. Counsel, just as a, as a reminder, as we move into 2021, the rental for what we're occupying over there is a little over $104,000. And we're leasing out roughly 13,000 square feet. Our landlord is accommodating us. There's a couple of larger areas, break room type areas that we're using at the moment without, without a fee. We have had a professional architecture firm, Park Hill, has come in to look at the needs as we move forward with this potential project. I'm going to list just a few of the facility challenges that they identified. So today, we have two different waiting rooms to get into the public health clinics. And for those that have been by the building, this will be those two doors on the north. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on the south side of the building next to the park. But having these dual rooms requires Ms. Wells and her team to really double staff. Even when they do that, those two waiting rooms are too small. Our exam rooms are too small. They were never built as exam rooms. So they do lack sinks, counters, and a few other items you would expect to see in a clinic space. They do also in many ways double as offices for our providers. And by extension, we have very limited privacy in an area where you need it the most. No patient restrooms in the exam areas. So once patients have been brought back, if they need to use the facilities, they have to go back into the lobby, lobby area. Our cold storage for vaccines and other pharmaceuticals, certainly right now, we're preparing to receive the vaccines for the COVID-19. But Ms. Wells and her team are an integral part of providing vaccinations year round. And certainly you're likely most familiar with what goes on late in the summer as we start getting our schoolchildren ready to go back. Because of the constraints of the facilities, we literally have storage in corridors and working areas. And we also have very limited options for backup power for those items that have to be kept cold and/or frozen. Storage space is limited. Ms. Wells does have to store certain items off-site, just not space to put them in. We lack dedicated training and conference space, work areas. Laboratory is actually part of general circulation. When we have an emergency, a disaster such as we have now and have had since March, we're often forced to relocate staff into other facilities as the service needs ramp up. So think about the phone banks, contact tracing and those other items that we began really heavily about the first of April. With community development in as well, obviously they're limited on their space. They've had staff members double up and they don't have a way today to have a separate intake and drop-off space. And just as the chairman noted, today you've got 39 FTEs in public health. That does not count. Many of the temporary workers that have been brought in or as we're able to assign other city workers to come in and help to meet surges. Community development has 12. There are some benefits that we have learned with co-locating public health and community development. And I think the first bullet right there really does say it all. They're serving the same people. And now with this first chance to be together in one place, that is a one-stop shop for their clients. They work together on community partnerships. Public health's goal of improving where people live and the quality of their homes is actually the mission of community development as well. Co-locating does increase our opportunities for shared projects, for grant-funded programs. Just as a quick reminder to that, pre-pandemic, city council, you may remember that Ms. Wells and her team had added five new programs just in that short run-up to the pandemic from where the, where the new fiscal year had begun. So there are tons of opportunity. That means there's need. And if we're able to provide the appropriate place in which to serve those needs, we've been very successful in acquiring grant funding and other opportunities to do that. Just as a reminder, the basic operation of public health is just under 40, I mean, just under 50% grant-funded. If we add some of the additional reimbursement programs that have been added, it comes up to a little over 60% grant-funded. Y'all are well aware, the public may not be. Community development throughout the pandemic has been our point of contact as individuals or families were quarantined or isolated and had no ability to have people bring things, just as simple as food and cleaning supplies. Your community development staff has done that. Really having those two departments together has extended the capabilities of public health. Let me go to a few photographs. So counsel, this is one of the workroom slash storage rooms slash pharmaceutical storage. See the copier there on your left and you see one of the vaccine storage units to the right. Jump in over here, you see the ultra-low temperature freezer. That's actually there in preparation for some of the COVID-19 vaccines that are coming in. But as you can see, that's a very, very limited workspace. Take you to one of the examination rooms that doubles as a provider's office. And you see that the only separation there is literally that curtain. There's not a wash, and there's not a built-in counter. And in fact, the counter is that rolling cabinet that you see kind of in the middle of the screen. There are two photos on this slide, the one to the left. That is the upstairs storage. I know the facilities committee has been in there. That is an extremely low-roofed facility. They actually decked it and took over an attic to try to provide that storage. On the right, you see one of our providers with their office space. Literally just in the open, you see the settee for people waiting. Not, not an optimal way to provide these very, very important services. Here's another exam room that also has a provider's office in it. And to the left, you can kind of see the end of the curtain sticking out. It's very difficult to bring patients in, certainly especially those that would have with them a parent or a caretaker, a guardian, something as that, and really be able to properly serve those needs. Solution, counsel, the item before you today, twofold items. One is to set up a budget amendment, create a capital project and put $2 million in that. And then the second is to take the assignment of a contract. Facilities committee has worked with Mr. Wilkerson as we've gone through a very long list of properties and opportunities and, you know, what, what can we find to meet the need? And we believe the facility that best meets the need is 2015 50th Street. All-in, this is about a 2.8 acre project that has just a little over 29,000 square feet in a single building. It is the old Sabres location. I think prior to that possibly was a Safeway or another facility. Within your 29,000 square feet, there's just under 7,700 square feet that are leased. We'll show a photo here in a moment. But within the single open shell building, there's 21,712 square feet that is open available right now. We have toured that facility, including some of our facilities department staff with us. It should be very easy to reconfigure, very limited demolition that would be needed. The location itself, we believe, really, really enhances the accessibility of the service. There's just nearly 31,700 households and roughly 87,000 people within three miles of the building. 50th Street itself, in front of the building, they're at 50th and U, carries 54,816 vehicles per day. That's a 2019 traffic count. The North-South Street Avenue U, that is the other boundary of the property, 4,700 vehicles per day. Again, there is a traffic signal there. The parking area is suitable for more than 200 cars. I think very important for what we've gone through this year. We have enough space that if it becomes necessary to again open and operate our own city testing site or distribution of disaster supplies, you have the perfect place to do that. Counsel will remember through the late spring and early summer when that need arose to put in a testing site of our own, we had to do that at one of our libraries. And of course, we also needed then to get the library back open as a library as we headed into, into school season. This location here would give you a 24/7, 365-day ability to provide these services, to do so with your main location and to do so without taking another city facility out of service. The purchase price that you consider today is $1.1 million. That's a little over $37.40 per square foot. We do, should this item be approved today, make a $10,000 earnest money deposit. We have a 60-day feasibility period, 30-day close. Counsel, the source of your dollars for this, in budget speak, is your general fund cash that's over the required amount of the reserves or excess reserves. Counsel, there's $2 million that we're asking you to appropriate in the budget amendment. It does include the dollars out of your first CRF reimbursement. So you're putting those back into the same use that we've already spent once. Most importantly though, counsel, should you appropriate these funds, this does not in any way take your general fund reserve below policy levels. It does not reduce funding from any approved project, operating budget or anything else. This, this in no way takes away from what you've approved in the current year's budget, but instead with the assistance of the CRF, it allows you to move forward with this project with cash in hand. Let me take you to a couple of photographs here. The red outline, and that's not showing up quite as well as we had hoped. The red outline indicates the 2.82 acre property. And of course, you see the large building there in the lower right-hand side. That is the building of which we are speaking. I'm going to bring this one up just a little bit on the Zoom here. So here is the front of the building. You see to the extreme left, which would be to the east, you see where the Dollar General is walled off from the larger portion, which is then to the right. As it sits today with its storefront, there are four doors already there. It is a tilt-up building, does have column spacing inside that's appropriate for future division. And of course, counsel, once we go to the feasibility period, we will know more about the leasehold. This picture is taken to show you to the right of the building or to the west. What you see here that's a little different than that aerial we had up front, there is now a large fenced, secure area and you can come in and out of the building, in, into and out of that area. You do that from kind of the back corner. There is a truck dock or a well, if you wish. Don't know that long-term we would need that, but it opens into a series of overhead doors that certainly makes the logistics of what Ms. Wells and her team do function much, much better. With that, Mayor, I'd like to ask Ms. Wells if she had any comments. I'll stop the presentation for a moment and can certainly go back should the council desire. That'd be great. That'd be great, Mr. Atkinson. Catherine, Catherine Wells, do you have anything to add?
I just want to say, you know, this is a very exciting day for public health. When I started at the department in 2014, one of my first jobs was hiring a new health educator. And at that time, to create space for that individual, we actually converted our pharmacy from an actual storeroom to a filing cabinet. So we moved all of the medication out into a filing cabinet that's stored next to the Xerox machine in order to make space for that new position. Since then, we've grown tremendously. And my goals with public health here have been about building community capacity, aligning resources, identifying gaps in our community, filling those gaps when there's nobody else to fill them, linking people to care. And all of those things are things that we can do better with a more flexible space. And really, I see this building as an opportunity to have that flexible space. In times of a pandemic, we can build up, have additional staffing at the building, you know, really have opportunities to bring community partners in, you know, and at times where, you know, public health doesn't have that big place, we can also, you know, contract a little bit and be ready for whenever there's something new that we need to address. So I really appreciate this opportunity. Kind of having, being able to be part of, you know, designing a building will be an excellent step for our community and the community's health.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Mr. Atkinson, you talked about the population served and the, you know, how many households and, you know, individuals. I think you've done a little more work around the actual Lubbock Health Department clientele. And can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit more? Do you have a slide you want to share on that?
Mayor, we were unable to get that slide to, to properly juxtapose. Obviously with public health, when we look at the client base, that's always done in kind of a heat map type environment within identifying any particular, you know, location. Doing that, we find that this, this location really kind of fits in between some larger clusters just to the north and some clusters a little bit to the south and kind of the southeast. It is very centrally located. It has arterial access to its front. It has collector access to its side. The facility we have today, you actually turn off of, usually off of 19th. And you come into downtown and work your way to it. It also has very limited storage space when we do that. I was going to see if I could pull up and I don't, I don't think it's set up to, here we go. I can speak a little bit better to some of the demographics that are associated with it. If we look at that and we look at the growth, it appears when you take, today we're using the one to three mile or out to the three-mile circle. We've also plotted it out to the five-mile. Currently, the median household income within our three-mile bubble is just under $43,000, the average, just under the 60, per capita at 22,000. We're, we're just right in the middle, really of the primary blocks of users for that facility.
Thank you. I'll open the floor for questions or comments. Let's start with Mr., looks like Mr. Christian is going first. Randy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm very excited about this location as well as for Ms. Wells and her staff. The information that Mr. Atkinson just shared with us makes sense to me, especially if you think about the residential areas to, to immediately to the south, to the north and even to, to the east. Couple of questions I have, just for clarification, we are only purchasing that portion of the building that is minus Dollar General. Are we posting that, that Dollar General location as well? And I see some heads nodding there. So what is the lease terms on Dollar General? And would we acquire the rest of that when that lease is over for the Health Department? And secondly, also bus routes. I would think that the bus routes are very, very positive for that location as well. And is, are there, is there a bus stop there directly in front of this location now? If not, can we work that where there would be a bus stop directly in front of that location? Because I think that's something that we, we certainly need to either put in as a bullet point, as a positive for this location, or work towards making sure that a bus stop would be there. And I'll hang up and listen.
Two good questions, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll take those in reverse order. There are bus routes that travel in front of it. At the time that we've been able to, certainly number one, close the purchase, but do the necessary renovations, this fits right within your work that's going on with your transit studies today. And actually placing a stop directly in front or extremely close to that building will not be a problem. So we will have your public transit opportunity. You asked about that little over 7,000 square feet of the total that is leased. Yes, counsel, that is included in the purchase. It's in the same building. There's just a division wall that's been put up today. In speaking to the terms, that is something that we will receive access to should you approve this item today. And it will be part of our work during the feasibility period to make those determinations.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Looks like Mr. Chaddis had, was off mute for a minute. Juan, you have a question or comment?
Well, I did, but I think Mr. Chris in there stole my thunder. I was also very interested in the, the, the bus system because it's very much needed. Ms. Wells, I congratulate you on the work you guys have done within the area that you guys are providing, were provided with. I think this is a step in the right direction. I'm very much in favor of what's, of the presentation. The demographics of the people being served is great. Again, when we do the transition, you know, services, interruption of services, logistically, as that, I'm sure that's already been addressed, but can you share that information with us?
Catherine, you want to take that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's going to be a process to get, you know, the building designed and my goals to not have any interruption, especially to our core services like vaccine. And I'm sure we can arrange, are leaving the Housing Authority and make sure that we have clinics up until those days.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to somebody else. Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. I don't see anybody else that's off of mute. It looks like Mr. Griffith has a comment. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Wells brought up that she, we, we were fortunate enough that she came to the City of Lubbock in 2014. She spoke of, and, and obviously the presentation shows the confined spaces that we, that she's been operating under. I would like to speak on behalf, I believe, of the Facilities Committee in saying that this is not a knee-jerk reaction to create this facility from what has happened with COVID-19 and the pandemic. This is something that we saw several years ago as a need for our city. And that is that public health is so important, but we were in such a confined space that she's been working in. So I believe that Mr. Massengale and Ms. Joy would agree that this is something that we've been targeting for a long time. And it just happened that we were able to get to a point where we can do this. And it's not a knee-jerk reaction. This is very needed in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. I want to, I want to call on Ms. Patterson Harris now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that while working as a juvenile probation officer, I had the opportunity to visit the current location on numerous occasions. And it was almost embarrassing, to say the least. But to know now that we have the opportunity to improve things greatly for whoever finds themselves in need of the services at the Lubbock Health Department. One of the most important things for me with regard to looking in this direction is the fact of the accessibility, that no matter where you come from in the City of Lubbock, north, south, east or west, the accessibility to this location would work well. And Mr. Atkinson gave us the, the traffic count, which is huge. And so I think it's just, it, 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 it's our duty. I think when we talk about public safety and things of that nature, this is definitely included in that. And to provide a facility that serves the public well is what we should be doing.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Okay, I don't see any other comments. Counsel, do you want to take these items separately? Or do you want to take them collectively? Mr. Weaver, you're okay with us taking them collectively, aren't you?
Because the ordinance is an emergency matter, Mayor, I think it might be more appropriate to take that separately.
Okay.
That does have to pass, that does have to pass unanimously in order to be approved as an emergency matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Okay, counsel, so I'll, I'll, let's consider item two, one. Is there a motion to begin consideration of that, Mr. Massengale?
Move to approve.
Is there a second, Ms. Patterson Harris?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, further discussion on item two, one. Okay, let's, we'll do this via a show of hands. All those in favor of the motion to approve item two one, please raise your hand. Okay, I count seven. Ms., Ms., Mr. Weaver, you agree with me? Ms. Garza, and what do y'all?
I count seven also.
Okay, passes seven. Yeah, item two one passes seven to zero. All right, let's go now to item two one one. This creates the capital project that goes along with item two one. Mr. Griffith, do you have a motion on this?
Yes, Mayor. Move to approve.
All right, Mr. Chaddis, can I get a second from you?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this? Looks like Ms., Ms. Joy, do you want to add to this or are you just ready to vote?
No, I'm just ready to vote.
Okay. Any, any discussion on two one one? Okay, there's a, so the motion in front of us would, would, is to approve item two one one. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by the same side? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Ms. Wells, let's hopefully we get through this feasibility period and start working on a new home for you guys, a very well deserved home, I believe. So I guess Christmas comes four days early for the health department. Okay, I believe that takes care of our regular business. We, we set this up so that, so that staff could go back to work. When we finish executive session, we do not have an action item. We'll come out into regular session and, and adjourn our, our meeting at that point. So it is nine oh six. Lubbock City Council will hold executive session today for the purpose of consulting with staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and hold consultations with attorneys under section 551.071 of the Texas government code, excuse me, Texas government code. It's eight oh, excuse me, nine oh six. And the Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. Counsel, just a reminder, that's a separate Zoom link. Let's leave this meeting and go to that meeting and we'll get started right away. Thank you.
Okay, Lubbock City Council, it is eight fifty one. The Lubbock City Council has returned from executive session back to our call us to order back in regular session. I believe that our business for today and for 2020 is concluded. Ms. Garza, is that correct from your perspective?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council, it's eight fifty two. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. Merry Christmas. We'll see you next year. We're adjourned.